I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I solicited the flag of the state of New Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
I have the invocation by Josh Mack.
Well, there's been a lot going on in this county, and we ask that you keep your hands in the way of your family, ask for your children, help them guide you by, and if they're lost, they're helping to help them, this last week. Um, I also ask that you keep your hands on all employees, uh, family and head families, as those who took their jobs and tribulations, uh, and right to live. Also, guide us as religious attorneys, as right decisions, as right people, so that we have success.
Mr. County Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners, everybody that's joining us here today. Um, are there any public announcements from the audience? I don't have any written public comments. Seeing done, um, we'll move on to, uh, item two, um, RFP twenty-one dash oh four detention center meal awards. Good morning, Ms. Amicia.
Good morning. RFP twenty-one oh four for detention meal services was solicited on April nineteenth. Trinity Group Services and Summit both submitted proposals. After being evaluated to ensure, um, sorry, responsiveness, the staff is recommending that we award RFP twenty-one oh four to Trinity Group Services. I'll stand for any questions at this time.
Or do you give a place?
Yes, sir. They're good at operation. Summit's a good operation, but they're a good operation also. Okay.
Got a motion and a second to approve RFP twenty-one oh four. Please call for the vote. Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Portova?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Erwin. Appreciate you. Don't be yumping over there. On the trailing agenda, uh, first item is to approve the commissioning minutes for, uh, May eighteen, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have any questions or corrections? Having none, we entertain a motion to approve commissioning minutes, May eighteen, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, the second item on the agenda is the treasures report, and it's for information only, it's posted in the agenda packet, um, for your information. Item number three is, um, discussion and approval of agreement twenty-one dash eighty-seven, the memorandum of, um, agreement between Eddie County, City of Carlsbad, and New Mexico, uh, Environmental Mineral Natural Resource Department, for the county's contribution to the final phase of the brine well remediation. I put in the packet, um, a few slides to help provide a summary for you. Um, there've been several, uh, video meetings with Secretary Probst and members of her staff. Uh, the city has joined. Last one, we had the wood group anticipate to talk to us about where are they at, what's really going on, what remains. Um, we talked about the monies that have been committed to date, those that have been expended, and, uh, we really emphasized, this is it, this is the law. So, my recommendation is that we let you, after your consideration, approve the agreement. This agreement is principally about the money. The, the state needs the city and the county's commitment before they can go according to House Bill Two and say, "We have the firm commitment," and then they, they'll, they'll get the other eighteen million dollars, or the other fifteen million dollars that will make eighteen to finish this, so. Um, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the material that's in there, there's a lot of data. Um, maybe the last page has some diagrams on it. But basically, the filling that they've done to date and what rubble has collapsed in there already, they fill that. The initial grounding took care of the south part, and then subsequent pumping of sand has filled in. They call it, um, filtration into the bulking. There's a bulking factor that they use in the modeling. So now they've kind of filled that up to a level, and then this remaining volume should get them close to the roof, and then what will happen is that roof will collapse just a little bit, and that'll, that'll finish the ceiling. There, the comments from Lloyd were that they believe that the principal concern for catastrophic failure of the cavern has passed. This will just finalize the ceiling and protect what groundwater is above it, um, protect that brine from migrating up to the, uh, to the, the surface water, so. Based on the information and discussion that we had with Wood, I think the modeling that they've done, they've been able to history match the modeling with the injection volumes that they've done, and I'm reasonably comfortable that this should be the last of it. The plan is to improve the cost by pumping, um, a blow sand and an hydric mix that they'll take from local quarries. Um, their biggest expense, other than the pumping cost, will be trucking three hundred thousand barrels of water out as they displace it, and whatever disposal arrangements they have made for that, so. Everybody's had their fill of this. There's been forty-one million dollars expended to date, and the estimate is some seventeen point eight million dollars remain to finish. It's a lot of money. It's just sad all the way around. But if, if the city and the county aren't committed for the local contribution, the monies that were earmarked at the state are, um, potentially at risk. So, Senate, SB Two set aside five million dollars in, in EMNRD funding, and, uh, Department of Finance and the Secretary helped, they talked to the, uh, Transportation Secretary Sandoval for his willingness to extend the, the, uh, excise tax from transportation for one more year for the brine well, so there's the other ten million dollars. So, we also didn't want to compromise our relationship with Secretary Sandoval. Wes and Jason and others have really worked hard to develop a strong relationship with NMDOT, and we want to, we want to recognize and, and honor that agreement. His, his willingness to do it, we thought, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll put our share in. We have it budgeted, um, so it's up to you for your decision, so. I'm happy to try and address any questions that you might have.
OCD's got funds, it should be used for four subjects of this. I hope that was real paid to come to the city and county monies to finish the deal last year. But I will, I'm glad it's gonna be over, and I'm sure we won't.
Absolutely. This is not the first contribution the city and the county made. We've, we've probably got, where did you go? Yeah, we've made, we've made two annual payments, we accelerated one, uh, this might be the fourth, and I think we had an extra one last year as well.
We, we made three at one point three million per year.
Yep.
Then we made one million or one five last year.
One five last year.
And then we're making another one five.
So, we're.
So, we've got twelve?
Twelve million. We're in at twelve million, as is the city.
The question is, how, how has the, uh, brine water that's been displaced, uh, been disposed of? Has it been sold? Is there a offset?
I, I don't know that. I don't think it's been sold. The, the quality or the, it's, it's like nine pound brine, it's not, it's not quite heavy enough. So, I think they've been taking it and disposing it at a, at a local disposal, whatever arrangements they've been able to. But it, they haven't, they haven't sold it for, uh, oilfield brine, to my knowledge.
What about as far as, I mean, obviously, the hydraulics of that, there's a push-up. Is that interesting? Are we looking at authority?
Um, so the, the, you're right, it's, it's a bit like a balloon. As long as you maintain pressure on it, there's, there's equilibrium.
Right.
And so, um, but the overall weight and the overburden that's, that's not, um, supported will eventually crumble and, and fall. You, you could, in theory, keep a positive pressure on it and monitor and maintain that the whole time, but that monitoring and maintenance cost potentially would be in excess of the remediation cost, but, but that's a potential.
One final, once we spend this one five, are we done?
We, we, we attempted to incorporate that into the agreement and the contract, which County Attorney would, he, he might suggest that was a valiant effort, but with, it wasn't, yeah, what's gonna.
Because what I'm worried about is like you talk about the crumble. You're never gonna get it totally, completely filled and bring it back, but and so you're always gonna have some erosion and stuff, waters and that kind of stuff. What, but then what kind of maintenance program is gonna be in place?
Do you have any kind of a warranty, if you will, on it, like if something happens again?
With, with, okay, woods are just placing as they're directed through the engineering.
And, and what's doing the engineering, right? I mean, the state is, the state is just, they're at loss. So, they, they contracted Wood to do the engineering. Um, and that's why we, we really, or I tried to really pin them about their modeling and the matching, you know, you pump this much volume, where's it at? You've done these surveys, show us those details. And some of that's, that is represented in the material I pulled from their, their information. This, this'll sound like arm trick quarterback, and it probably is, but this, this isn't the only way that this could have been addressed, but we, we weren't in charge. But if you look at six hundred foot deep cavity, it's a big cavity. But on an oilfield basis, and you spent nearly six, you will have spent nearly sixty million dollars on replacing that, that's a tragedy, that is just, that would not have happened in an oilfield center. Just wouldn't. So.
We don't know anybody in the oil field now.
Not that you'd, uh, not that we'd get to interject, so, uh, uh, again, um, Commissioner Beard, your comment about those OCD, we, we, we ran down those paths as well, right? Those, those reserve monies and, um, there's a through the course of three legislative sessions over three years, our local representatives have worked hard to get state monies to address this issue. This last year, um, there was gonna be a significant shortfall, and I said we weren't gonna do anything. And, uh, that note got to the governor, and, uh, I'm sure it did not make any positive impressions, because the next day, there was a video call that, that the governor's, one of her chief assistants, Carolyn Brookle, set up with the state Secretary Probst and the DFA Director, Secretary of Finance, and several others to bring this to some resolution. And that's where, um, in the original legislation, it said that this money would, would be encumbered by, um, couldn't happen unless there was a, uh, the, the Secretary of Marrow said, "You can't put that in the language." So that was pulled, but there was an acknowledgement that would still require a local contribution. So, we've had several iterations through this in the last ninety days, and, uh, their desires to try and start, um, late Ju- July, June, late July, that's what it's called. And, uh, they have sixty odd days of pumping, presuming they can get their materials to side sorted out, slurry, all those things, so, um, be careful. The, uh, approach that was taken is one of many that might have been taken. Um, but it's just been an arduous, arduous journey. The state made choices about their engineering and contractor, and here we are today, so. Last, last fight. And to be honest, the governor has made her opinion very, uh, clear. There's no more state money to do this after this, so.
Well, that's interesting, because it is a state highway, and there is a tragedy, and there is a lawsuit for being off.
See, a tragedy, I foresee over time, you know, equilim, settling. Is that gonna be six inches, two, three quarters, who knows? That can be worked out on highways, and they spend one piece of that inch of money. What I worry about is that pad, it settles, it's a big pad, it's a problem, it's making it out, it's not good. It's over time, you see, I think, uh, the state can't make it out.
In, in the event that something like this happens again, will we have more oversight into how it's repaired and made this contract?
I, I would hope so. I would think the lessons learned from something like this, um, that, to answer your question, sir, if Al is in charge, we will have more oversight. That's the, that's the question.
Well, it makes me feel better, you know? I, I think if, like you're saying, lessons learned, we need to make sure that we have a say in, uh, its repair.
I mean, just in post-discussions, and this, this is a, again, this is that hindsight, armchairing, but if you look at the amount of material that has anhydric in it, that, you know, from, from the potash mines around here, you could have built a slurry line from any one of those for about a third of where we are today, and used that material slurry in the wells, and it'd be set up rock solid.
Most, we'd have a good time when we have that much material.
Absolutely.
If they don't, if they don't know what to do. They try to cap it.
And, and so it, it, it comes back to one of those. Everybody knows better except the local folks. We have lots of folks who aren't here helping tell us how to do our business. I, I think this is an example of something like.
The local folks might have to do the lobbying. Nothing needs to change, that's not a fact. But I'm just saying, I'm sure Woodger really out-lobbied, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure that I would be jumping up and down if I'm the contractor on this job.
So, the initial cost estimates were forty-seven million, right? That was the initial cost estimate to, to, to do the project. But then we see that we've all appropriated another five, uh, well, fifty-four million total, and that came from the city and the county. But then now we're asking for another seventeen million, so we're actually at seventy-one million. To build. Oh, I mean, it's, it's, so we're a hundred and fifty-one percent higher than we. Now, I think that the BLM move, I'm sure that's probably your idea, I think the BLM move to move to take material that's already, that, that the BLM will give for free, you know, because the sand is tremendous, tremendous expense. The sand they pumped down in there has cost thirty dollars a cubic yard, something like that to this point. So that's gonna be a huge cost savings there. And, and I would drill down, I would, I would be, so I would go through the whole thing. The orphan well thing that Fed brought up, I'd say, "Why are we doing that? Why is the contractor a hundred and fifty-one percent over when we've changed from cementations material to sand, which is a quarter of the cost, which now to free sand, which is zero cost, plus trucking, but everything's got trucking in it?" So, I'm still trying to figure out how in the heck we're a hundred and one, a hundred and fifty-one percent? How we're spending seventy-one million on something that should have cost forty-seven million, and really something that probably should have cost fifteen or twenty million? And, 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 and I'm a hundred percent confident, I would ask, I would really get down and be really, really ugly if Al had not negotiated the last part of the contract, because he said, "We're not gonna do anything," and we're all in agreeance with that. And so I would be, I would, I would really be drilling. If Al had done that with his experience in oil and gas, with his experience in wells, in pit and slurry and all of these things, I'd, I'd really drill down. I don't know what we do here, that this is, I, I hate, hate, hate to spend this money, and I think if we'd have had more oversight, if, from the beginning of the project three years ago, what have we spent? Can we go through it? Was it seven, have we spent, we spent seven, the city spent seven? Is that what it is?
Well, we spent, we spent, uh, ten point five.
County's ten point five.
All right, we had three annual payments, three million dollars, and we did one point five last year.
Were those payments three million dollars, or was that a one, was it one point three for three years?
Hmm, do you recall?
One point five for three years.
Okay, so we're seven and a half plus one and a half. Yeah, so we're at six, plus another one and a half, we're in seven and a half.
Seven and a half, yeah, okay. We're at seven and a half, and the city's the same, seven and a half. So there are fifty, local monies.
So we have.
And I agree, we shouldn't have to pay for any of it, because the orphan well, we didn't permit the well, we don't know anything. Not our business, but what do we do, but what do we do now?
That, that's the whole deal. I mean, we can discuss it to death.
That's right.
But the problem is, do we fill the hole or not fill the hole? And I think we fill the hole.
We're obligated to.
I, I, I think Al's done his.
But it comes down to that, do we fill the hole or not fill the hole?
I think at some point, the only thing I'd say is we're gonna have to mean it. Last time we said, "This is the last time we're doing this," and here we are again, because Santa Fe Strong warns you, "Not on just this, on everything."
Well, like, look at the school days.
If you don't extend the school, we're gonna cut your money off. If we don't do this, we're gonna, and that's not how you, that's not good government. And so at some point, we're going to have to mean what we say, and if this is it, this is it. It's not our problem, it's not our fault, and when it falls, that's why we did this, because I think it was like nine billion dollars worth of industry that was, yeah, so, yeah, we had to.
Between the railroad.
Oh, my gosh, at this point, at some point, we're gonna have to mean it, and the state.
And that comes down to the focus of these five, us five people. You know, if, if we say, "This is the last," and we mean it, then the next time, it becomes for us.
The last one was the last one.
That's my problem today, is she making me a liar, because I told last time on time. Because that was told to us then, "Oh, yeah, this is it, this will finish the project." And here we are again, no, it, not even close, so, well, I mean, I guess it's closer.
Good news is catastrophic failure, I'm sure has passed. I mean, this thing's not gonna warm around. But a comment I'd like, if Mr. Venus had been in charge, instead of, the oil front needs hauling their cuttings from drilling wells, and big busts being exposed up in the landfill, we could have been charging them for something like that, you know, to maybe make some money.
Well, the whole deal is that we just gotta make that decision. I for one, you know, it may not be a catastrophic failure, we're at all six hundred feet, but it doesn't have to. All that, all that highway needs to do is settle six inches, and you've got a catastrophic, uh, possibility. Because you have one of those gas trucks or something, get that all through.
I must mention all utilities, we have to run through there, I'm not sure.
It's red sand, irrigation.
So. And, and, and that's, and that's where I'm at, I may have said last time, but now I go, I don't know. And we've got, we've got friends like Secretary Sandoval that's, you know, committing money, and he's trying to, he's trying to do his part, and I don't want to burn him, and that's, I mean, honestly, if he wasn't involved, I probably wouldn't do anything. But, but, but he's been, he's been a.
Exactly right, that, that's, that was the.
He's been an advocate for us in the past enough, and I'm not, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna burn him. This is the last time, though, and we've, we've taken records, yeah, this is it, this is it for. Just, just write that down. And, and, and this is it for the, this is it for the Woodger, you know, I think they've milked everything they milked out of the seventy million, it's just absolutely ridiculous. We could have had, like I said, a Baker Duser or Noble Drilling or somebody come here and just punch. You know, we've drilled, how many wells have we ended up drilling? We had sixteen, and we were gonna drill, we've only drilled six, right?
Yeah.
It's almost half.
Yeah, half.
So, so they drilled eight wells, they drilled eight of the sixteen that they budgeted, we changed materials, they're using, they're using less material than they budgeted, now we're using re-material, we're still on our feet and on the budget. So, this is like, this is like some of the budget, uh, this is like some of the budget discussions from the first guy here. Like, well, ten five roads, we in nine over budget, but it was only five million over budget. So, anyway.
I agree, absolutely agree.
Record, this is last, this is Stevens' last time to vote.
Anyway, I'd like to make an option.
Thank you, Secretary Sandoval. Motion in a second, please call for the vote. Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Al. If, if, if you had not negotiated the last round of, of everything, I would not have had the confidence and the trust of a yes on this, so we do appreciate you handling the, the rest of this thing, so.
We did call them up short, um, and they, they listened, was, listened, so, thank you. The next item is, uh, NOZARC, um, system program implementation plan. When we do some of these service agreements, it's your, we ask them for, you know, their implementation plans, and so they, they provided this plan, and so we just, I would like you to, um, approve it. It's, um, nothing, nothing but, it's just one of those process keeping things.
Any comments, questions?
It's an important, um, service that's provided to the county, so.
Isn't that true that one cat is four hundred and eighty thousand, other cats in seven years, or else it'll be forty-eight thousand? Those dogs are sixty-seven thousand. I agree, you know, that's a lot of cats. It's a four hundred and eighty thousand cats, we, neuterers weigh a one cat, earthworms weigh a one cat.
I've never considered it to be planned, but.
Four hundred and eighty thousand, a lot of cats. So, I don't know. Anyway, that was my only question.
We need to keep NOZARC, for sure. We need to keep NOZARC, for sure, I bet her.
Okay. Uh, entertainment, we, and the entertaining motion that we approve NOZARC Animal Refuge Assistance Program Implementation Plan.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Hutton?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Willoughby?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, uh, we'll, we'll get you a good number on the cash.
Yeah. Like, for any, I don't think like a, a lot of cats. How many cats could we fit in the county building? I could, we fit four hundred and eighty, I got it in. So, if we turn two cats loose in here and just shut the door, what's the amount we come back to in seven years?
We could have a Broadway musical or something.
Good.
All right. Item number five, Acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Act Funds, Ms. Roberta Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is part of the State and Local Recoveries Act, the three hundred and sixty-two billion dollars. Um, of that, the counties will be getting allotted sixty-five point one million dollars, and of that, Eddie County will be getting eleven point three million dollars, uh, based on our population in relation to the US population. Uh, this money will come in two tranches, fifty percent, one of which we've already received, um, here a week and a half ago, I believe. Um, and this money is basically going to be used to combat the coronavirus pandemic. County manager has put together a committee, which we'll be meeting tomorrow, to start discussing on the use of these funds, which I believe we'll probably bring back to you all to discuss before we move forward on anything.
The, the US Treasury has put out, so the legislation came, and then the US Treasury has put guidelines on how to use the money, and National Association of Counties has done some assessment, and I hate to call it interpretation, but helped question and answer back and forth with US Treasury on how the monies can be utilized. It's sort of like a grant, but not, there's no expectation that the monies are paid back unless they're used inappropriately. We'll have to do quarterly and annual reporting on how the monies are used, and if there are in our submission, there are things that are, that raise questions, we'll have to address the questions. If they, if they don't pass the litmus test of Treasury's guidelines for, uh, uh, use, then we could be, could be subject to, uh, having to repay some of those monies. But I think the things that we've, uh, Ms. Roberta and I have talked about generally based on, we both read.
Pages and pages.
Oh, Lord, Lord. It's, it's, it's enormous, and they update frequently, right, because there are three thousand and change counties in the nation, and they're all firing questions back to NACO, and, and they're sort of going in contact with Treasury, so. Um, we have some thoughts about what we can use here locally to help support, um, county services and, and some other, other opportunities that we'll talk with the group, and then we'll bring some recommendations to the county about how to invest this first tranche, and then what we would anticipate for that second tranche of five, five, five million.
It will have until twenty twenty-four to essentially encumber the funds, and then twenty twenty-six to actually fully expend those funds.
But one of the things that, um, there are a couple of cannots in there, and one is, one is you can't put it in pension funds and, or rainy day funds.
Rainy funds, yeah.
And, and another is there are ties to infrastructure, but it's mostly water sewer and broadband. There are some discussions about roads, you can't directly apply to roads, but if, you know, revenue loss and, um, and you can show that you deferred work because of the lost revenues as a result of COVID, then you potentially could apply it that way, but you have to be real cautious about how that plays out, so.
That's one of the broader categories, because all the categories relate directly to the coronavirus pandemic, and then you have the, category of the revenue loss recognition, which Al was talking about, you have to show which, uh, how much revenue you've lost in taxes due to the coronavirus, and then that can be applied to more general services, general government services, which could entail roads and stuff like that, but, uh, that's the more broader section.
So, for example, we show a loss in, show a loss in oil revenue, can we, does, do we have to tie that money directly to, can we tie that money directly to that industry?
No, they're not having you do that, because they're just saying, in theory, whichever loss rec- recognition you're, um, recognizing during that timeframe, they're just going to assume that it's due to the coronavirus pandemic. They're not going to make you go and say, this is exactly what you've lost in, do certain categories, they're just going to lump everything together, that way it's easier for everybody.
So, you'll have a baseline year, which will be twenty nineteen. And then you'll demonstrate your revenues received for the, the first period year in question, and we're going to use twenty twenty. And so, all of those revenue streams, here's what we had, here's what we received, and then there's an opportunity to uh, apply an escalator to that.
Every December, you're going to benchmark that, every December showing your revenue.
And the calculation method is spelled out in the leg, in the, in the law, and so we'll, we'll do those calculations.
Similar to the PPP money, essentially, you show.
So, um, we'll, we'll look at that, and by doing that calculation, what it does is allows you to potentially use some of that gap money for things that you deferred. And if you recall, in our twenty twenty budget, we did defer a lot of maintenance, we deferred a lot of other things to try and have a balanced budget.
Or mediation, things like that.
So, anyway, we're, we're pleased to have, um, the monies, and we'll, we'll look at it. It's not something that we have to have a decision on immediately. I think from discussions with Ms. Roberta, we're confident that we can put five and a half million dollars to good use pretty, pretty quickly, and then we'll have another five and a half million dollars next May twenty-one, I think that's when we.
The earliest.
Yeah, so. Anyway, wanted you to be aware, and I guess we need to.
We do need an approval for this.
Approval to accept it.
Questions, conference on.
And just, um. And just as a side note, Commissioner McCutcheon did already sign this, it was required for signature, and so we did have him assign the actual acceptance ahead.
You already come out with this, right? Well, you made the motion. We have a first second, and a second. And a second, is that, please call for the vote.
Hutton?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Willoughby?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Roberta. Yeah. You guys are welcome, so.
We didn't, we didn't want to, yeah, there, there was a lot of legwork up front to make sure that you were in, and it wasn't exactly straightforward, because you might imagine with Treasury, Commissioner Carlson and the tax boys would, would speak truth to that.
Well, I think that if we could have assistance in anything that we can use to help our budget and help the citizens of Eddie County, we need to do it, so I applaud.
Absolutely.
The fact that we went out and got these type of funds.
Absolutely.
One question, did it kind of bind the bill, are there any restrictions on burning this money prior to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Nice drive, though. All right, moving on, uh, item six, Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda.
Anybody have any items to pull or discuss? I have one, Mr. Burns, so we'll entertain a motion that we approve Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda as presented, pulling item five, uh, pulling item B five.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thanks.
I'm reading B five, I'm sorry. Entranced with the B five.
All right, I have a motion that's hanging out there by itself with a second now, please call for the vote. Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Willoughby? Yes.
Yes.
All right, item B five, Burns.
I just kind of want to talk about this project more than anything.
I'd love to talk about it.
Uh, some more.
Yes, sir.
You're about to, you're about to be going on a rap.
Yes, sir.
Next, what's about part?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, our current status of the, this project is, we're kind of attacking it from both ends. With our approach to this, we're designing our major, our major design, our drainage structures, and we have a engineer working on the south, coming from Commerce to Tine Hill Doggo, and we have an engineer working from the north, uh, tying in from the Happy Valley Loop, which is five twenty-four, I think, going across to Lee Street, and that Hackberry, um, what do we call it, the Hackberry Draw, we're doing a box core in there, and we're currently, um, in design on both of those, and we'll be ready to procure those right after the beginning of fiscal year, hopefully breaking ground in August. We're also about to go start building fence through some of our rightaway from, uh, Lee Street heading south, and we'll probably take some of our dozers and go start clearing and grubbing at least the Hackberry portion and that portion south of Lee Street to go ahead and get a corridor cut in there, so we're about to, you're about to see movement on it and some positive progress, but that's the timeline that we're looking at on it.
Is this the, the million dollars here that the city committed, is that the MOU?
So, the way this is going to work, and what we negotiated with the city with Al's help, and, um, the city being very supportive of this and really wanting to see this thing move, is the city has agreed to pay for the portion that's within city limits, and they've agreed to pay up to a million dollars a year, not knowing what their future revenues are going to be. They've agreed to pay for whatever their portions are, but just over time, at least a million dollars a year.
Okay, so let's say half the loop is in the city, and across five million dollars, you're going to pay five million?
We're looking at about six miles, and, uh, approximately two miles in city.
So, it's, I mean, it's really a couple, couple, couple million dollars?
They're looking at about three to three and a half million, is what we're, is what we're hoping, that's what our estimate is.
That's really good, anything for, for the maintenance, or are they going to take over the maintenance portion once it's?
Uh, once we're complete, once the city's, is the city's, and once the county's, is the county's.
That's great, that's, that sounds really good.
Do we have, do we have the survey and, and the state?
It was supposed to be done, we went and drove it on Thursday, and, uh, with our consultant that was doing that, and realized that his surveyor was confused about what we'd asked him, and it'll be done this week. So, it is, it is, the stakes, they were supposed to, uh, stake the, uh, the edges every couple hundred feet, so that we could see it with the flagging, and it could be clearly, uh, see the route.
But there were some old centerline stakes that were there, but you really had to know where they were and look for them, like Jason had showed them to me a few times.
Like I said, these are supposed to be pretty easy to find, because we're about to start building fences down portions of it to lay out our rightaway and really kind of identify and solidify that we've acquired these pieces of property for the next little bit from these.
We, we, we lead the rightways with private landowners, and Jason's been in significant discussion with the BLM to, to renew that rightaway agreement on the BLM portion, so there's private, city, county, state, all in this, and so, the, the whole orchestra's in there. And, uh, the, the portion across, um, Dark Canyon, Constructors, and other entity there, I guess.
There's Constructors, and then they, uh, I can forget the other top, Douglas.
Douglas, yeah, but they're, yeah, but they've all, they've all agreed, and they're working on those aspects, and so we've sorted out the access in all of those spots, everybody seems to be on board, ready to go.
And we're going to come in Commerce or?
We're going to tie into the intersection and let the city do what the city does.
Oh, okay.
No, we, we, it, it makes most sense to tie it right there at Commerce and just light out to the highway. Um, then we'll talk to the city who owns the industrial park, and in MDOT about, is there a need for controlled intersection at Commerce and, um, National Parks Highway? The second phase of that would take Hill Doggo all the way down to Dark Canyon, and then out of Dark Canyon, so, which we're currently working on right now.
Yeah.
Okay. Isn't, uh, in the future, where Commerce is sixty-two point eight, but that kind of front side, Crossco is coming in, two and five, that area, but it's on top, you've got a real live loop?
I think what we're trying to do there is, the future of the south side of the loop would be to take it south of the airport, and that would be closer to where we're looking at trying to bring Crosscore to the live loop.
Over to, to our stack.
Right, and there's just, we set out and really evaluated it, we already had the rightaway bought to tie into Commerce and Corales. Um, it, it realistically was not that far of a jump over there, and there were going to be a lot of steps and pre-work to realign and go south of the airport, which we need to do, and we need to continue to pursue, but right now to get the corridor through there, that was the path of least resistance.
Get, get the trucks off of Lee Street when the schools are open, they're on, on Lee Street, back up ahead. This, a couple of months they've had this year has been challenged.
Yeah.
So, this, this will be a real help this first phase.
Other questions? Entertaining motion that we approve, under the Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda, item five, B five.
I got that motion.
Motion second, call for the vote. Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Willoughby? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Jason, thank you, Commissioner.
We appreciate the city being good to work with on this, we're very grateful to work with. Appreciate that, thank you, appreciate all negotiating with it, coming up with something that's good for all parties.
Department updates. Ladies first.
I just wanted to let everyone know, Jessica and I will be out doing inventory the week of June fourteenth. Uh, so we've been sending out emails, hopefully all the department heads have received those, um, we will need a representative from each department to walk around with us and answer questions, open doors, stuff like that. Um, we're coming to the end of the fiscal year, our non-capital purchases, such as computers, have been cut off, um, to allow us time to barcode those before we get out to do inventory. Um, last week to get purchase orders, new purchase orders in will be next week. Um, and then we'll be closing out the fiscal year, obviously, the end of June, so please start getting your invoices, and so we can start closing out projects, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Hooper.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, um, Al asked me to give you an update on the southeast and to give you some milestones, so that if you do have phone calls from residents out there, you kind of have some dates there and, and where we're at and where we're going. Um, know that if we do run into any issues, that these dates can be changed, you know, and change orders happen, but I think, um, the majority of the issues have been taken care of, uh, that road should be open through to traffic in two weeks with a pilot car. Um, the other big issue that we had, we had a gas line that, uh, nobody had claimed, it was an old gas line, and thanks to Al helping me, helped direct me on where to go and who to talk to in order to get that line checked, it ended up being a deadline, so we got ahold of a contractor, and they're going to get that cut and capped, and construction can keep moving forward, and then the city's got a water line out there, um, we, it's not going to really interfere at this point with construction, um, but we're, we'll just wait to see whether they're going to deepen it or move it. I apologize for the phone calls, um, hopefully, the signage, I am out there today and see if there's any signs up directing local traffic, so hopefully that's done, the pile of dirt that was there, blocking the road, has been further to the west, east, sorry, that way traffic can get all, down the old part of Old Refinery and access a kind of a. That way traffic can get all down the old part of Old Refinery and access a kind of a makeshift bypass there around the construction.
A lot of concern about sort of locals having emergency access and whatnot, and so working with the contractor and Wes, Wes has been diligent about personally going to visit with these folks, so. But we've got to, signage is a big issue, particularly on a project like this, so we've got to make sure everybody understands. Cause it'll change, right, as construction moves along and they get tied in.
Needs to be written in the document. My first broke this road out, my first got a good phone call two weeks later. It was, I mean, I've been on that road all part of my life. I wouldn't. There was not sign on.
There, you, you, there was a change order because it, it was supposed to be, they were supposed to have another route um, in place so that local traffic could access it and through traffic also. But, uh, the contractor thought that it was unsafe for the employees that were out there, and so they had put in a change order. And so the traffic control was in the contract, but then the change order changed it. Um, and they closed the road down and everything just kind of, there, there wasn't a lot of communication right there at first about that, and, um, it's a lot better now. So, hopefully things go a lot smoother and there's a lot less frustration and a lot less phone calls to you.
I can see that being a safety concern, absolutely, but we do have to make sure the locals can get to their cars.
Yes.
That's all, it's, all those are just as important, so I appreciate you getting it straight down.
And the, the locals that actually lived there didn't have a real big issue getting around, it was their help. And that, you know, they weren't real familiar with, as familiar as the people that lived there, so that, that was probably the biggest issue.
Thanks, Rose.
Thank you.
And, and I'd like another one of these, not the Southeast two point O milestones, well, another little job. Always have a local. Southeast, Southeast two point O, I don't know if that's what we call it, maybe, whatever. Yeah, box core.
So, it's, we, we have, we have a operator that, that.
Yeah, I think I can.
Feasibility, right, so we've got a contractor, he's looking into that. There are multiple agencies to help us out there between the BLM, Army Corps, and Fish and Wildlife. But I think that everybody's, I think it's feasible. You just need to know the elements and how they have to proceed so that we can go there. City, maybe we could, uh, work on an arrangement for that little parcel they have where we tied into, for me there. They were, they were, they were game for some, some partridge trading. Be sure what they want, I could tip.
You could give them the cork out.
I said, yeah, yeah, straight up, even Steven.
I may have to give us a little bit, but we probably.
Yeah, six pack or something. Anyway, but well, I, I, we're on the move ahead on that and we've got people looking at it, so it is going ahead, so. River job, that's what we're going.
River job.
River job two point O.
Yeah, bypass two point O.
Any other updates, Mr. Allen, Brian would be up here. Brian's our local brother man.
Rainmaker, what are you talking about? Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, rain's been great. It's also let some water into our buildings where we usually don't want it. My team is addressing it. The roofer engaged a strategy last week at the road barn um, to try and get to the rain, head of the rain that we got yesterday. We weren't anticipating Friday's outburst and, and the protective measures failed, I guess, and some wind and left quite a bit more rain in the road barn. But we got all that cleaned up over the weekend. Lost some internet for a while, but IT just informed me moments ago that they do have their internet back, and we only lost one power supply, so it could have been a lot worse. The rainmaker of the month, I'm gonna turn all of my maintenance staff, minus the custodians, into groundskeepers because I anticipate a lot of vegetation growth everywhere. And so we'll try to keep on top of that, keep our properties up and robust, so. All staff, any questions you do not have?
What's, uh, the timeframe that you feel that the roof is gonna be?
I believe, uh, they had a pretty good start on it last week. They worked Friday, Saturday. Got, they got mobilized last week, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday. They had to tear off quite a bit to prepare a lot more. Uh, so a lot of that hard, heavy lifting is done, and now it's about installing the various components in the certain layers. Uh, so I would give them ten days, fifteen days, assuming they get, you know, favorable conditions, cause a lot of it is, weather has to be certain way, can't be wet, they gotta dry everything off and so on and so forth, so there could be some delays. But for the most part, we're shedding a lot more water out there than we are taking it. And then last night, uh, this facility, for example, I believe we got such a volume of water so fast that the four downspouts that are up on the roof to get it off just got overcome. So, kind of turned our roof into a bowl for a little while while it came out. So, we had some leaks here that are usually nuisance leaks. They were a lot worse this morning, and so we had a pretty big mess up in the third floor.
I was actually driving down here whenever I got hit in, like, eight, this roof and.
It's good to get rain, good for job security, which does help taxes of the party social.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate all your extra efforts and the emergency response effort, so. Other departments, Chief, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to remind you all, June tenth, out at the office at ten thirty, Permian Basin Road Safety Coalition will be here. I'll be working with Ms. Gay and Ms. Tara to get, uh, quorum out so that way if everybody wants to come, they can come. They'll be donating some equipment. The sheriff and I talked, I think we're gonna give one of the tools to them to utilize as well in the field, so. The other item I had is the Guadalupe fire. I'm sure you all have heard about it. It's a one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine acres as of this morning. It is in some rough terrain. They do have, I think, three or four hotshot crews out there working. The park is actually managing the fire, so if anybody has questions, you can direct them to me and I'll get them as much as I can. We're gonna have a booth at the fair and farmer's market to try to recruit some volunteers, so we'll be set up. It'll be for the farmer's market, the third Thursday of every month with Jerry Strong. Um, the last thing is, is just to remind everybody, if they've got questions about sandbags or prep for flooding, everything is primed up pretty good. We've been watching it. If we get a substantial amount, we will have water into both Artesia and Carlsbad, so. We're prepared for that and we'll just ask the residents to be as prepared as they can, so appreciate y'all. Have a good day.
If there's a need when, if you get a question, we could. Yeah, we don't have a sandbag machine, but we can get access to one. So, they could come and get the bags and fill them up and, yeah. What? Did it just find its way to your place?
Well, it works a day two point O.
I'm gonna just stand for questions. Make sure we're okay. Uh, on that, the sandbag machine is part of our female equipment purchases, which we had a meeting with Ms. Roberta last week to get that procurement out, which has, uh, been approved and the agreement signed, so that is part of one of our purchases that we'll be able to make sandbags and set those out.
So, can, like, community or constituents without, in the community come pick them up somewhere?
So, my, my intention with that would be, and I don't know if you've seen the video of these, of the sandbag maker essentially, is we will make the sandbags, instead of setting piles and bags there for people to do it themselves, we'll set out piles of sandbags and they can just come pick them up, is what the intention would be, so.
Yeah, we might have to try running that a little bit just to see how it works, right?
Well, I, I was just thinking because several people in my neighborhood got flooded on Friday. So, I was just thinking I could go around and let them know, there's a sandbag available, this particular spot, and then.
We're working on that, and if we need to deliver them.
But right, right now it's, the bags are at the fire services. But the sand, there's a pile out there. So, right now, the process is you go to fire services, they have bags and you fill them, take them with you. In the future, it may be that we have sandbags filled that they could come and pull out. But today is make your own. We have the bags on the sand, you bring the shovel, fill them up.
I think they're Artesia.
Do what, sir?
What about Artesia?
Uh, they set the sand and the bags out there at this, uh, North Road Barn by the Atoka Station. Is that correct?
On thirteenth. So, we're debating whether to leave the roof open since if we get another two, three inches.
I was supposed to get more.
No freighters from Canadian weather to fix the roof.
No, not at all. Praise the Lord for the rains.
Amen.
Won't complain about it at all. Not, it's not productive for construction, but we need all we can get.
Play a lot of roads.
Really can't. Anything on?
Thanks, Jason. I don't bother, um, any other department updates. Seeing that, let's do legislative update.
For Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, how's it going this morning?
Everybody's a lot happier with rain, right?
Yeah, we got great rain, it was good. Just gotta give you a little update, uh, things that are going on, a lot of interim committee meetings right now. Uh, some that I think you'll be interested in. The LFC will meet in Redoso on June the twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. The key topics there will be an update on oil and gas production at this meeting. And on Thursday morning, uh, they're scheduled to hear a presentation from, uh, the Transportation Department, from Secretary Sandoval, the status of, uh, of road projects. Also, he'll be talking about Senate Bill one thirty-three, which pertains to essential air service to some communities and House Bill two seventy, which is pertaining to autonomous vehicles. I have already made reservations. I'll be there, uh, both days on, um, on Wednesday afternoon and Thursday morning to attend those meetings. So, uh, Wes and I will be getting together, coordinating some on that. If anybody else would like to go, let me know and we'll try to get together. So, that's about the legislative stuff. Uh, also today, of course, is the CD one election. That'll be interesting to see how that all turns out, because one way or the other, there's gonna be somebody leaving the legislature. Uh, so how that will all take place and who it will be and how it will be filled, I guess we'll see once that happens. Now, onto the, I'm not so fun stuff. Last Wednesday, which you saw from my email, just Fish and Wildlife Service announced that they were in the process of listing the lesser purchase. We've been there, done that, right? We all have back flashes from that, that process, but, uh, I attended a Zoom meeting on Wednesday afternoon with the Fish and Wildlife Service that talked about this listing decision. Uh, they laid out the justification for the listing decision. They'd be looking at two distinct populations, and they have what they call a northern distinct population, which entails a very small northeast tip of New Mexico, uh, part of the Texas Panhandle, uh, Oklahoma Panhandle, Kansas, and in the southeast portion of Colorado. That's the northern distinct population. And to break this down for you, on that population, that's where a majority of the prairie chickens live. And so they're proposing that population as threat, okay? Then the rest of the range, which is a southern distinct population segment, will be that half of the Texas Panhandle coming down the west side of Texas, eastern part of New Mexico, and that population, which are, the southern population, will be listed, proposed listing on it as endangered. There's a lot more stipulations on the endangered population, if it's designated that, than the threat. So, we have concerns there. This decision, of course, was brought forth by, uh, a petition that was brought forward by the Center for Biodiversity, the vendors of wildlife, Wildlife Guardians, to have the LPC listed. Chicken numbers are down to about twenty-seven thousand. We've actually seen an increase in some places of chickens in the last few years. But the primary, the primary threats are habitat fragmentation and loss. And then you'll never guess what the second is, climate change. That just makes you feel warm and fuzzy, I know, but that's what it is, climate change. So, as we look at all these different issues, we see dots connecting, as we talked about at the last meeting. The proposed rule is a hundred and seventy-five pages. Nice evening reading, but I can tell you on any of these proposed rules, I told Al this the other day, there's a trick to reading them. You start on the last page and you read back, cause the rest of it's just stuff, okay? But, uh, the next steps in this process, they'll have two public meetings. They'll be virtual. That'll be on July the eighth and July the fourteenth. After that, the service will be in the process of reviewing all information pertaining to these populations and making their decision, and that could last up to twelve months. During the call last week, I proposed a specific question. It can be up to twelve months, so I asked a specific question. Could we see a listing prior to the twelve months? My good friend, Amy Luters, who's a, who's the Regional Director for Fish and Wildlife Service chimed in and assured me that they were gonna take as much time as needed to review all of the information so that they get a good decision when it comes to that type of listing. And I appreciated her doing that. The thing that we have to understand is the reason it wasn't listed before is because they did not do that in their prior listing decision, that they didn't consider the, the conservation programs that were already in place. And so they threw the decision out. Now we make this circle back over the last several years. So, um, so this, um, Regional Director assured me, I'm I said, Secretary, the Regional Director, Amy Luters, who's, uh, said that she, they were gonna take as much time as needed. So, as we look at this, another thing that came up were the CCA, CCAA's, County Conservation Agreements, Candidate Conservation Agreements with assurances, which some of you may remember. These are, uh, these are agreements that landowners and agents in different entities can sign to give them protection, uh, on their properties and be able to develop them under certain standards. Uh, I personally feel like that that probably saved us last time on the listing for having those agreements in place. Uh, some accuse them as being extortion, but at the same time, when you don't have a lot of chances, you kind of take what you can get. And those, those, those candidate conservation agreements have worked, and they have given some people ability to go ahead and operate and carry on with their, with their business. And this means everyone, not just oil and gas, but ranchers, farmers, even the county as a party to some of these, okay? So, that's an assurance. The other assurance is, is that for those, it's just, say, oil and gas companies who may not have these in place, or that we know there's a lot of been, a lot of changing of hands of different companies and properties in the last several years. You know, I wanna stress to them to make sure that if they don't have their properties enrolled, that they get them enrolled, or if they're getting ready to buy something, to make sure that that is, if it's in that habitat, that they get those enrolled. Because that gives them that confidence and assurance of knowing that they can go ahead and develop under those standards, because after a listing occurs, in case it does, then those things get locked down. They're not a candidate species anymore, they will be a listed species if that happens. So, the candidates, so stress to our friends in the industry, that's what we need to do. Working real closely with all the associations, Permian Basin Association, the OGA, uh, Fish and Wildlife Service, BL, all the cattle growers, other industry parties, I have conversations. all the cattle growers, other industry parties, I have conversations going on with them at this time and seeing what that approach needs to be, how we're going to do this. There's a lot of questions being asked of the service right now. Uh, so it's gonna be pretty fast and furious till those, uh, till those public hearings and then after that. But I'm staying engaged with those to make sure that we have standing as a county if we need that as we go forward in this process. Any questions?
I'll be here to hear about your visit or your meeting in Redoza.
That should be a, a really good meeting. I can tell you there's some challenges up there because I was there this weekend. Part, find a place to eat in Redoza. They're still not open and, uh, they can't get help and a lot of places are closed. It was crazy. That was my wife's decision, I'm buying one of them. I went up there to make her happy. How important it is to make your wife happy, right?
As a world warrior, you should be able to live on salt kings, bay area sausages and binyu wings.
And I, and I don't, I didn't have any problems, sir. Appreciate, appreciate you talking to the industry, I would, I would keep, uh, keep lines open between industry and be communicating things that are coming down from San Vic because we need, we need some work to be able to have. Hopefully, we could avoid anything here, but I don't know if that's possible, negative stipulations set up that, that are. I was fully engaged in that back in my former life. So, we, we know kind of where those things are at different places, they're now important. And, uh, hopefully, we can show the information, what information is there. I don't, to be honest, I don't understand, but don't feel good about this decision based on where we are right now in today's climate, the growth speed. Uh, but at the same time, we want to make sure that those tools that allow us to operate are still in place and then we can, uh, pull some help from our friends on the other side of the state line. And, uh, well, they were very instrumental in installing this decision last night and, and we're engaged with them, okay? Yes, sir.
I have a view, I think the decision was wrong a lot. I think, uh, well, apparently, fought out resolutions at some point in county law. We're having to look at the, I don't believe that we can. Worth or not, uh, also we're looking at the thirty. That was it, better.
Yes, sir, and on that point, Commissioner Beard, we are working on that, that thirty, thirty issue. It, resolutions, and I know Commissioner McCutcheon has wished his, his opinion of these, and I agree with you on those, but at the same time, they do give a standing and it was just on record. That's very important, once these things come to a court decision, when, and if they do, it's very important to have a think of our thirty. Love thirty, twenty six. Unprofessional, legally.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item on the agenda is the travel request consent agenda. We have no prior, uh, requests and we have a few future, you can see that these are opening up a little bit, a little more movement, taking care of this is a little more, so.
Mayor, take a motion that we approve the resolution, agreeing with, excuse me, with the travel request consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion, second, please call for the vote.
Question?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
Carl's?
Yes.
One other? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, um, we have no emergency business this meeting. Um, and next item would be legislators and elected official committees. Sheriff Cage.
Good morning, everyone. I have a couple of things. The, uh, next two counties, we're actually going to meet this month in person. It's gonna be a hybrid for folks that are still, um, nervous about being around everything being, but, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, most of us will be there to be face to face. We push pretty hard for that, but I think that we, we've lost a lot of translation. Also, the conference, the annual conference, I've been asked quite a bit about if the answer, annual conference is gonna go. It is this year. Um, and San Miguel County was, was, they had put in the RFP, they answered the RFP, they went to bid for it. Um, unfortunately, there are a little concerns still about they're not quite ready for it. So, uh, my, my buddy, Commissioner Rebecca Long and her cronies in Lee County brought it up. And, uh, so it, that's, that's good news for us here in southeast New Mexico. Uh, the annual conference is gonna be held in September in Lee County. And so, we won't have a long way to travel and I think, uh, they, I've seen proposals, they're gonna do it upright. It's gonna be a good conference. And, uh, so they, thank you to Lee County, they kind of saved the day on that when everybody else was scrambling, trying to figure out who could, uh, actually support it. So, that was good. Um, and I hope we'll have a good attendance there, I think we will. I think everybody's ready to get out and see each other again. And I think that's important. Um, yesterday, I was, uh, it was, I was honored to, Mayor Janeway asked me to, uh, help lead the parade, the Memorial Day Parade and speak at the Veterans Memorial, uh, in, uh, here at Carl's Bad. And, uh, it was a, it was a good turnout, we, uh, we got poured on. The, the rain was, just came out of nowhere, we sprinkled on and bam, it hit, but it was still, uh, it was, it was a good, it was a good, uh,
Good turnout.
A lot better than I, I expected. And it was my honor to, to address the, the crowd. Um, our MRAP, that is something I, is, that we have, this, this is something, another good partnership that we have thankfully with the city of Carl's Bad is our MRAP is struggling. Our, our, uh, armored rescue vehicle that we use to protect our SWAT team and, and also for, uh, with the idea is the water rescue because it can go for anything. Um, unfortunately, we're having some problems with the, uh, with the motor and, and some of the electronics talks to it. So, we're hoping we can get it fixed. We thought we had a, a workaround with that. Uh, one of the other counties was gonna, they, they don't have a SWAT team and they were gonna give us theirs a renegro. Unfortunately, so we're not getting that one. But the good thing is the city has one, the city of Carl's Bad has one. And we're having a regional tech team, a regional SWAT team, where we are one team. Makes that, that's ours as long, as well as theirs. So, we're able to share that back and forth. But we're working on, we're, we're working on trying to get our MRAP fixed, um, because it is good to have our, our own. But we do have that backup there. Another, uh, I'm working with Mayor, very closely with Mayor Janeway right now. He came to me and wanted to talk about doing a law enforcement memorial, uh, like a, a fixture. And so, I said, yeah, I'll go out and I'll, um, I'll raise funds for it. We've got some local folks, uh, that don't really care to be recognized, that, that rogered up the, uh, the funds for this thing. It's gonna be, uh, we, we actually have, the county has the lion sheriff, which is not a, a good thing. Uh, fallen law enforcement officers, native county, we have two sheriffs and one deputy. And the city has a, a, a city officer that, that, that was fallen. And we also have the state police, also one in the area. So, we're gonna have plaques for each one of them. But we're, we're moving forward on that. If anybody in the county has any use, has any need for both hand sanitizer due to pandemic response, we have, the sheriff's office, we have a lot. We've got, uh, big, big. Okay. Cause I mean, right then, we've gotten way more than we were ever used. And I mean, that just shows that how, how much it will be happening. Um, I just made a post this morning on, uh, an article that came out in the Albuquerque Journal regarding fentanyl. Um, fentanyl overdoses in New Mexico are skyrocketing. We've got, we've got folks dying all over the place recently. And it's not the, it's kind of changed the, the, the danger. Used to be when fentanyl first came out, everybody like, oh, my gosh, you're gonna, you're not even gonna know it, get in contact with it, you're just gonna kill a few. Well, there were few instances of that and it kind of got blown out of proportion with it. What it's doing now is, we're season, we're finding pills, pill food, it's a little blue pill. Uh, not that, that little blue pill, it's this one pill. And, um, it's kind of, and, and I, in the article, my, my friend, Cal Williamson, who is the Special Agent in Charge of DEA El Paso, said it's worse than Russian roulette because Russian roulette got a one in six chance of dying. With fentanyl pills, that one in four chance, a one in five. Because what's happening is there are actual regulated pharmaceutical grade fentanyl, though better used for extreme, extreme pain, uh, remediation and that type of thing. But what's happening is the cartels in Mexico have found out that this is very risky. They're making their own, which who knows what the, the, what standards they're using to decide on which ones end up. And with our, our borders that look more like a sieve than a wall, uh, that stuff's coming over. And it's coming over in a few weeks. Um, our task force seized twenty-nine hundred fentanyl pills last year and it's, we're, we're on, on, we're on course to, to blow that out of the water this year. And that's just ours here at Pecos Valley. Between, you talk about Otero County and Lincoln County, who are also in the Region Six, uh, Chavez County and Lee County, they all have task forces that I oversee in Region Six. It's unbelievable what we're seeing. So, this is something we really need to be concerned about. And, uh, I was at the Drug Task Force Commander's, uh, meeting for a couple of days in, uh, Redoza last week. So, Captain Matt Hutchinson went and, uh, Mayor Janeway had asked me to go make a presentation. Their, their city council, they had a couple of recent overdoses in the city. And some, some constituents approached and said, hey, what's going on? It's wrong. You're gonna start getting those, those questions, you're gonna start getting approached. And, uh, the Task Force Commander, Leos, is working really hard to come up with some, some presentations to give, to, uh, to give to the, the, the community. But just know, and if your, if your constituents ask you, we are, we're on point with this, we're, we're, but it's, you would not believe how much is coming across the board, it's crazy. The, the smug lane is under it. So, we're fighting now. Uh, speaking of the task force, uh, I just got sent while I was talking, several pictures, uh, from the flooding and I, I really do appreciate Al Davis and, and Brian Stevens are working on alleviating their task forces horrible conditions that they operate out of. It's, it's, it's crazy. Um, the other really good thing we've been doing that I've been, uh, I coordinated with, uh, Jason Burns on is we had so many issues up the queen, uh, with folks, you know, a lot of folks from, from, from the lowland here go up, go up the queen, a lot of folks from Artesia go up. It's a really beautiful area. And we've had a lot of problems with the roads, we've had a lot of problems with ambiguities about ambiguities. Yeah, there you go. Ambiguities in, in the law because a, a, a lot of folks don't understand, we passed an ordinance, county ordinance, saying that you can, you can have side by sides and all this on the roads unless it's a state highway. And one thirty-seven is green highway, it's a state highway. Um, Jason and I have worked really hard, we're, we're, we've moved forward, we're making it part of the access road. And we've also talked with local, the state law enforcement up there to maybe help us out some and help educate our folks and start just picking them up. And, uh, and also just at least to push a law properly. That is an issue. But Jason and I are also talking to them about maybe us just that being a county road. Uh, I think that would benefit the citizens of every county better if it, why not? Why not? I think we can do a better job. The state apparently doesn't really care about it. Been up there, get that one cattle guard, it'll tear the front end off of the, off the car. So, anyway, you know, Jason is working pretty hard on that one with all these other projects. So, that's, we've got a lot more going on, uh, with all the flooding and all that stuff. Of course, I let my good friend, Commissioner Beard down by not giving him a call back. The pivot, and I, I don't have an excuse, everything's just crazy, but, but anyway, we're trying, we're trying. I think we're doing a good job. We are fully staffed right now, but we're losing, I think we've got one retirement coming up here pretty quick. So, we're down one. Again, we have two folks graduated from the academy. Uh, one of them, Ryan Kinniken, he graduated number three, but he got the academic award. He was number one in academics and he broke the sit-up record, doing three hundred and something two of the sit-ups. That's just what you must know. I think, I think we have three more going to be in the cabinet next time. So, we've got a very young agency.
Uh, uh, Commissioner, are you doing, you mentioned, uh, fentanyl community presentations? Are you doing anything like that locally or?
Again, we, we'll, we'll accommodate whatever, if anything, anybody wants us to do, we'll come out. We can come up and visit about it. I'll come out if I'm here, if not, I'll have a representative and then I can always have experts from the Drug Task Force.
I'm a good one.
No problem.
I have a quick question, if I can, along the lines of fentanyl and everything else, obviously, as you said, the open borders, lots more drugs coming over, is there some kind of statistics we could see across the state? Is there something that you have that you could show us that?
Yes.
Recent fentanyl death. I would love to see that and I would love to understand what the state is doing to protect our citizens against this, this drug overrun, right? Which is a, and I understand, I'm probably nothing really, but, uh, and especially since there's some representatives from the Cooper forces area that were against border walls ever, and I'm, this isn't a border wall discussion, I'm not asking that. But what are we doing to protect the citizens of New Mexico from having overrun with drugs? Uh, which has been a problem for a while and obviously, when you have that many folks coming over, I mean, I watched it on the news the other day and it really is, I mean, it's just, uh, do whatever you want. Nobody's getting checked and it's, it's a big concern that, uh, that's getting dumped in not only New Mexico, but if I was Texas or some of those other states, of course, Texas has their own border, but I'd have a problem with New Mexico not trying to stop stuff coming from in my end to my state if I was Colorado, Oklahoma.
It's a significant issue if it weren't for HIDA, for HIDA's support with the federal agencies, which that, that concerns me is, is, is if those federal agencies are gonna start, well, well, border trolls are at the reins pulling on that. And that's, and that's a fact, that's not opinion, that's not, that's not propaganda, that is a fact. They, and I, I, they've had their reins pulled back. And I'm worried about other federal agencies that are alphabet agencies, you know, you've got DEA, you've got FBI, you've got all these, HSI, all these people. Um, I'm worried about them. I'm, I'm very concerned about ATF. We work very closely with ATF to combat violent crime. As a matter of fact, I have a task force officer for, that is dedicated with ATF. I'm seeing some very alarming trends in ATF right now. And I would hate to have to pull back, but we have to look at their, their, their policies and how they're gonna handle things. Like I said, if it weren't for, uh, if it weren't for HIDA, for the, the, the coordination, the. Like I said, if it weren't for, if it weren't for HIDA, for the coordination, the funding, the training, the support, if it weren't for that, New Mexico would be lost to, I mean, guaranteed. It'd be, we'd be struggling. I'd be in here asking for a little more money for our task force and we would still not be able to handle it because if we didn't have that support from HIDA, the actual infrastructure,
And I think also, yes, it coming in, but it's also coming from China and other places as well, the synthetic farms of fentanyl. And this is a trend that has been on the rise for the last five years. You know, it's piggybacked on top of the ill-bred epidemic. And the ability to make the synthetic version of fentanyl is, is alarming and it's dangerous. The only place where this has a use should be in surgery. That's it. And as you said, extreme amounts of pain, plus this, you know, death and dying situation, only in a hospital, by the way, never in a pill fight. So, I think that what we need to do, you know, moving forward as, you know, county and as commission, we not only need to combat the problem of it coming in, we need to educate people on the dangers and really focus on rehabbing individuals and educating individuals on the danger of this and really giving it that route of substance abuse. So, anyway, we can talk about that for a while.
I'll get you something from HIDA. HIDA has done some stuff. I think it encompasses all illegal drugs because Mexico is the country, that's the open country of the world.
I originally.
That's what, yeah, every, and a lot, even China uses that as, as my rap.
What is the percentage of fentanyl that you see in minors? Is it, is there a lot of minor use of fentanyl or is it?
It's, it's on the rise. It used to be unheard of, eh? But it's on the rise.
But the danger is, because then they think, you know, they're doing something else. And I think it's, it's combined with other narcotics, heroin and other things is less than.
Marijuana. They're lacing marijuana with them. So, that's where, I hate to say this, but that's where the, at least if it's regulated by the state, legalized recreational, at least maybe you can keep some of that. But I'm telling you right now, legalizing recreational marijuana is not the magic area that they're saying that's gonna end the black market. But there's always gonna be black market. Legalizing recreational is what I think is, here's why, because we don't know what is legal about it. We have no idea today, as of today, we don't.
Do they put a tax on the black market?
No, they don't.
I thought they, I thought they did.
So, I think it'll help it. But no, I'd be really interested in, and I, and Commissioner, I know that, I know fentanyl, we've talked about this before, and I know it's an issue, but seeing it, seeing the borders the way they are, no matter what, it, I thought, the first thought I had is, oh goodness, here comes, and there's two parts that I get hit a lot, especially during the election, on smuggling people.
Yes.
Thank you. And then drugs. I know those were two massive concerns back then. I don't think they've ever gone away, but when you see a border as open as it is, for New Mexico, all of a sudden, now we have all those back on the table of, well, how do we combat an already massive problem?
Getting even greater.
It's worse now, but.
I'd be, I'd be curious to see those in statistics and see what kind of true talking points we could have, maybe to where we could have some good discussions with Santa Fe or, or the administration in Washington, whomever is pulling those strings and be able to sit down and, will they listen? I have no idea either way, but it's hard to combat the true facts. And I think if we have them, at least we have them, so.
Well, HIDA does a lot of research, we have a very large staff that do a lot of research, statistics, and, and good products come out of very, very informationally wise. I'll get a hold of that from the Road Blasting Director and we'll get that presented off to all of them to have a good exposure. I'm, I don't know, it's kinda, it's kinda scary right now.
We should take it on the road show, just, just as Commissioner, I mean, we're doing Arrowhead, I would find you reaching out to all the other sheriffs, if we could push this fentanyl learnings out there so that communities can see it and understand it. Because a lot of folks have no idea what's hidden over there. And I've got no issue with that, but any kind of education, because this is gonna be a massive problem and I, I hate to see, people using drugs are bad anyways and I agree, there should be something else. And I don't see the state doing anything about that either to help recovering addicts. Unfortunately, they failed to do that years ago and they haven't pulled that back. And I'd love to see that support as well because we've got a real problem with this.
I think the world, you could probably speak to that too at the number of things that are coming in detoxing out there. And, I mean, it's a completely different roster.
What is that? Narcan? What is that?
Narcan is a, hopefully, reversible agent. It's immediate. So, for any kind of opioid, heroin, fentanyl, narcotic, it immediately reverses the action. So, I believe you have nasal spray here. So, if a person is exhibiting signs of overdose, they're not alert, they're, you know, passing L, vomiting, whatnot, you give them a dose of Narcan and within seconds it immediately reverses them. But time is of the essence as well.
We're required to have it, of all. We, all of our deputies have it. I'll, I'll be frank with you, honest with you, you know what it's for mostly, but I, I make sure that first for them, if they come in contact with it. Now, it does have added benefit of protecting, you know, folks out in public who have overdosed or something like that. But I, my deputies prioritize that. Because if they're not okay, then they can't stop. And they can't, so they come first.
What you're saying that is, shavings of fentanyl are lethal compared to, okay, a crumble of fentanyl is a lethal dose of fentanyl. So, people won't come in contact with actual gen, other family members, police officers, if they inhale that, it's a lethal dose. This is a very scary problem.
As a matter of fact, we just had a, agency-wide training and reissue of our inhalers to all identities. Deputy, uh, August Fons, he stood around the academy. He wants a paper for the state representative's board, so we have to come down, he got first. We're, we're, we're pretty serious. It's ridiculous and we have to, I'm saying, yeah. I'm telling you right now, really, if you want to get high on marijuana, that's one thing. But, and I don't, the gateway drug thing has been, that myth has been busted a long time ago. But just, I think it's just the whole, the whole mentality that we go, okay, well, it's okay to get high. That's, our society's now saying it's okay to get high. I think that's gonna cause us more problems down the road with other types of fentanyl in there. And again, these, it's a mistake for ecstasy, which is where our word with kids, they're mistaken for all these things. So.
I'd like to add one thing while we're having this conversation. John started and he lives in the hall. There's a big gap in the law on our southern border and some of the ranch families that live down there are indicating they're coming through there if it's unpatrolled, they're just walking in, coming through without any resistance. I don't know whether that's true or not.
That is true. And be thankful we're not on that. Other sheriffs down there would say, most sheriffs that I'm visiting with on that border, they're, they don't, they're, 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 I don't envy them because I don't know how I would answer my constituents. I don't know. Trying. So. Go with us.
I'll run this one.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. Sideburn with us.
Are there any other elected officials? See any county manager comments? I'll, I'll be brief. I've been involved in several meetings with different groups, CD on several things, CDOD on the strategic initiatives, deciding course for the next couple, three, four years. Participated with a meeting with Poltech here recently. Again, just building partnerships, building networks, helping advocate for the county and working on some messaging that would advocate for the diversity of industry in county, across the county. We're blessed to have multiple opportunities. Agriculture, I saw some statistics the other day that the agriculture from Eddie County, you know, on a revenue basis is one of the largest in the state. We have, we have large mining, we have nuclear, we have oil gas, we have, there are just a myriad of things. Our, one of our largest challenges is overcoming the resource availability of manpower and capability. And so, again, helping provide those resources so that those industries can grow is in the best interest of the county, right? We want more folks to experience what Eddie County has to offer. So, we're working on several fronts there to help try and get that message out and advocate and counter some of the negative campaign from an information standpoint that occurs about, we've kinda started, I don't know, Brian, no discussion, folks that don't really understand our business and our situation, telling us how things should be, but have no earthly idea because they've never been here, never experienced it. So, we're, we're working on some things that would strengthen our message about the diversity and strength of Eddie County. And I appreciate all the other departments and directors trying to make sure that you have the information you need so we can receive those calls and dealing with those things head on straight away so that the citizens know that they're, they're being heard and their issues are serious. So, everyone said lots going on. You think that kind of the end of the year would be, or fiscal year would be kind of it? It's not, we're, we're a full tilt. And this is one of your, coming into the season of one of your favorite domains, National Roadwork, plenty of other work going on, glad you're there, so we can keep this one.
Just wanna, on that note of thank you, Russ and Alan for giving information on this house and update. And thank you, Mark, for all of the, that you, that you, that you, that you, that you situation. And I just want to make everybody put in hard work and, and stay safe.
I'll keep mine very brief. We've already kinda mentioned it, but just keep Artesia in the prayers, lots of tragedy and excitement on both, both ends, unfortunately. I mean, you had a funeral, the poor guy that did the funeral, son graduate the next night. So, you know, you've got all those emotions and it's been a very difficult time. So, please keep Artesia and if there's a family, do prayers. It's a breakdown and we rally around people, so thank you for that.
Mr. Russell? You're probably sitting up already.
I have swill.
That's really, really cute. In one executive session, they said you, um, surprised about the, thank you, uh, comments. Last item is number fifteen.
Motion. Motion second, please, pop and vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioners, thank you, everyone.